Good evening, everybody. It's 6:31. Tonight's meeting, the Summersworth Planning Board will come to order. Anna, could you please call the roll?
Paul Rabides, Jason Berry,
Here.
Jeremy Rhodes,
Here.
Chris Horton,
Here.
David Witham,
Here.
Robert Bellmore,
Here.
Mark Richardson,
Here.
Paul Goodwin,
Here.
Doug Haberman,
Here.
Thank you, Anna. And as round Lululeah is out tonight, Paul Goodman, pleased to appoint you as a full voting member for this evening. Your last as an appointed member of the board. First order of business is the approval of the meeting minutes from the November 15th, 2023 minutes.
Mr. Chair, move to accept as presented.
I have a motion to accept from Paul, seconded by Mr. Berry. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll abstain for not being here last time.
Thank you very much. Okay. Moving forward to committee reports, land use boards are in the packet from the City Council.
Yes, thank you. Two items just to briefly report out on tonight. The traffic signalization upgrade on the High Street corridor is nearing completion. At last check with the Public Works Director a couple of weeks ago, it was at about 85% completion. I would suggest it's closer to the 100% completion point at this point in time. Still have to do the walkthrough with the engineer punch list and all of that. But if you've driven that quarter, we would suggest that traffic flows have improved at least a bit because of that. There'll be more analysis and programming to be done to really fine tune that. The work on the handicap tip downs for pedestrian access at all of the intersections has taken place. So we're nearing the end of what has been a long road with that project. The other item to report out on, at the last meeting, the council voted down the amendment to the zoning ordinance, Chapter 13 regarding the historic overlay district. The council had considered a reduction in size of the historic district in three different sort of areas of the HD, of the historic district. That was voted down, but I can suggest that there was a lot of conversation around the fact that there is a need to improve that process. And I can't specifically articulate what those improvements would be, but I think there was a general consensus among council that the current system needs some fine tuning. So the incoming mayor, Mayor-elect Gerting, has promised to appoint a special commission, I think it would be, to dive deeper into the historic district rules and regulations and their tools that they use for evaluating the criteria. And that would probably be a joint workshop between the Historic District Commission and the City Council, maybe some community involvement as well. So although the amendment to the zoning ordinance did not pass, it certainly generated a lot of conversation and some pretty significant momentum moving forward to work on that. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Stratford Regional Planning Commission.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's actually, things are picking up. And we're doing things a little bit differently now, but first of all, we're just about to start looking at the next 10-year plan and doing the evaluations of the various projects from the different communities for grading them and giving them our our order, our individual order for what we think deserves the most credit first and on down in that list. So that'll be coming up, and you'll hear more about it as we progress through that. In the last couple of months, we've done a couple of field trips on the economic development side. And the first one was to the PEMS at, what did, what did, the gems at Pensol, sneaker plant over a new 108. And what a, what a facility that is. New facility here, relatively new facility here in Summersworth, where the old Sumner Printing building used to be. And the, the people who work there have a vision, and the people who own the company have a vision of being a major competitor in the world of high-end sneakers. And they have a plan for pulling that off. So that's going to be something to look forward to on the road. Their sneakers are already out there in a variety of stores. So take a look for them. They are expensive. They're in the $100 range or better. They're high-end sneakers, and they're, they're, they're out there to compete. So it's nice to see the shoe industry come back to this part of New Hampshire as well. So we all wish them well. And last week, we did a tour of Durham and the University of New Hampshire. And the subject was about the cooperation between the university and the town and how cooperating together, they can plan together and hopefully grow the university and grow the town at the same time. So the gist of the whole tour was about that cooperation between town and the university. So people, a lot of people are talking about more, you know, whether it ever comes to fruition, but in different parts of the county, a lot of people are talking about joint projects. And so, you know, maybe those things can learn from how one community does it. So we'll be having more of those field trips as time goes on, too.
Thank you. Good here. Eyes on 30. Any news?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we did have a meeting on December 6. One of the major topics that we've been covering has been beautification. So Councilor Cameron invited one of her friends, who is also the founder of the Don't Trash Dover program. It was meant to be an informational meeting where we wanted to understand how she came to creating that program. It's basically a clean streets program. It's what it is. In short, basically, once a month, they gather up for an hour, collect whatever they can collect from a certain spot, and they do it again the next month. So this would be in addition to any other programs that we would do here in the city. So this is something that we are talking about. It's not official, but Deb was very nice to give us all the advice of the tools and the methods and communication and all the things that would go into putting that action into place. So that's something that we'll continue to talk about, and if that ever goes into play, we'll let you guys know. Thank you.
Thank you. And one new entry for tonight, Community Power Coalition.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Summersworth Power Coalition met late November, just prior to Thanksgiving. And at that time, we held a public hearing. Received no comments from the public. And after discussion, the committee forwarded the Summersworth Power Aggregation Plan to the City Council for review and action. And at the last City Council meeting, they also held a public hearing, held an in-depth presentation from representatives from the New Hampshire Power Coalition. And very informative. And at that time, City Council approved the aggregation plan for the city manager to submit to the Power Utilities Commission of New Hampshire. So I think about twice a year, they vote on new community members. So we should look to around June time on hearing back from the utility commissions on the acceptance or application.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just one other detail that goes along with that. Representative Horton is correct that we're sort of eyeballing maybe a June timeframe to join the Community Power Coalition. Joining is dependent on whether or not their rates would be lower than the current power rate that EverSource provides. Interesting that a recent announcement, sort of after we had our public hearing and voted on it, that EverSource announced a rather significant drop in their rates. It's good news. It's competition. You know, if the community power rates are lower than that, then, boy, are we winners, right? So one can only hope. So it's an important detail of that.
Thanks, all. Any old business to come before the word?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, moving on then to new business. First item on the bill for this, Hawkins Family Reverkable Trust is seeking a minor site plan and conditional use permit approval for commercial and residential use at a property located at 5 Main Street in the Business District, MAP 11, Lot 210, Site 20-23, CUP 05-2023. Like to invite the applicant or the representative to speak.
I'll defer to Ms. Mears first.
Thank you.
Applicant is proposing to reuse the existing building to have two commercial units on the first floor, two one-bedroom ADA apartments on the first floor, and four two-bedroom apartments on the second level. A conditional use permit is being sought to allow the two residential units at the street level, the first floor, within the existing building. The property is located within the Business District in the Form-Based Code Overlay Area 3 and Special Parking Overlay District. The applicant is asking for four waivers, one from the traffic study, drainage study, school availability, and landscaping design standards. This application is complete and ready for review.
Thank you, Director Mears.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, FX Bruton from Bruton and Barrowby. I represent the Hawkins Trust. Matt Hawkins is here with me tonight. And Kevin McInney is here as well from Civil Works Engineering. So if you have any questions of them. This is an exciting project for my client because he is looking forward to making an investment in Summersworth and being in Summersworth with other projects and working with you in the future. And this is a good, I think, a good first step. This is the revitalization of the old police station, which presumably everyone knows would be well-welcome within the city at this point. It's a property that has a sidewalk already, which is good. I had to. But in any event, it's, it is an exciting project. It's a funny procedural kind of project in a sense, because when we started, and I think when the city agreed to sell the property, we thought it was going to be a fairly straightforward review. But because we need a CUP, because we're in this form-based area, which doesn't allow for residential use on the first floor, we need that CUP, and I'll ask for it. Only because we need the CUP, then we now need site plan approval. We wouldn't need that if we didn't need the CUP. So we're asking for that as well, again, because it's been triggered by us having to have a CUP. So in any event, fairly straightforward project, but that's kind of in the underlying background. So we need a vote on both of those things. And as Michelle mentioned, we have four requested waivers. I want, those need to vote as well, obviously. I won't really go through a lot of those waiver requests because I'll start by saying that this project will not involve the changing of any of the building facade or any footprint. So this is all internal, which is good. And it really kind of diminishes, I think, in why we usually wouldn't need site plan approval, because we're really not doing anything on the outside. It's all internal. Mr. Hawkins would like to provide for two ADU, ADA units, not ADU, on the first floor. They would be one-bedroom units. And the city has two existing handicap spots right in front of those two units. And we've had discussions. We went through the SRTC. And we've talked to Mr. Bobinski about the possible leasing of those spaces. And he's, Mr. Bobinski was agreeable to that. So we earlier presented that we would have the two spaces on the property, but we think we would like to keep those spaces and accept that offer if it works out. Maybe, maybe it won't work. I don't know. But the, the zone does not require any parking. And if it didn't work out, we would be happy to put them on-site. And, and we can agree to that. If, if it doesn't work out with the city, that we would put those on-site. I think I'm saying it accurately. So I don't think that's going to be really an issue, more logistics of whether we can do that or not. But we could easily accommodate that. One thing that Mr. Hawkins understands, owns quite a few units in the Stratford County, that when you have an ADA unit, you really don't have even a parking need because most of those tenants, if not every single one of them, rely on assisted transportation services. So, but nonetheless, we'd be happy to have them there, and we, we don't, you know, have any objection to that. The balance of the building would be four two-bedroom units in the upper portion of the building. And the lower portion of the building would have two commercial components. One would be intended to be what the picture says, a restaurant, but it's really an eatery. Mr. Hawkins doesn't really want to compete with the restaurants across the street. It's more of a grab-and-go kind of place. Might have one or two tables, but it's not a restaurant. It's not sit-down. It's not that. The other use is interesting. It's an indoor play area, intended to be an indoor play area for children. And you, if you know the property, you know there's what looks like a park. And it's actually a park area that is on this property. And what we've said in our materials, and I'll say now, is that there is no intention to not have the public continue to enjoy that park area. There may be a small patio added for the toddlers and/or someone who grabbed a sandwich, but I don't, that wouldn't really be of any consequence and really wouldn't affect the park area in terms of public access. So I think that's, that'll fit into the CUP requests. So I think that's generally the project. I'll just go through the CUP requirement just so that we, I can, we can say I did it. And then if you have any questions, obviously, we're, that's why we're here. So the first is that both public and private building and landscaping contribute to the aesthetic value and the right-of-way in providing civic spaces. One of the things we're going to do, you know, you may know that there's, currently, there's window frames from an older building, but those are all blocked up with concrete, and those will be revitalized with windows. And the whole facade will be renewed. So with the park area included, in terms of still continuing to be available for the public and not being, you know, roped off, if you will, we think that we meet that first test. B is the develop, adequately, development adequately accommodates automobiles while respecting the pedestrian spatial form of public areas. I made a reference that we had about 10 spaces. I think we probably have about six spaces. But again, I know this zone actually doesn't have a requirement for parking. And again, if we utilize the spaces in the front, that would be another two. But again, we feel that we can accommodate those on, on the property without any impact. And there's a lot of parking space, obviously, on the street and around the area. C is the design of streets and buildings reinforces a safe environment, but not at the expense of accessibility. I indicated that's not really applicable here because we're really not doing anything. Again, it's internal changes only. But I will say, we're creating ADA units, which is, I think, relates to providing more accessibility, particularly to living spaces. D is the architecture and landscape designs are inspired by local climate, topography, history, and building practices. We will have doors, so we'll respect the local climate. I'm not sure if that addresses that issue. But basically, again, the architecture and the upgrades with the facade, we believe would be consistent with the surrounding properties and would complement that area. And finally, civic spaces and public gathering places are provided as locations that reinforce community identity and activity. And we think that allowing the park to continue to be used by the public certainly hits that right on its head. And again, providing ADA one-bedroom apartments, we believe, really is, promotes excellent living spaces in the area and is consistent with the master plan that emphasizes creating livable, walkable, vibrant focal points. And we think that this project captures all of that, particularly with the uses that Mr. Hawkins intends for the commercial spaces and offering that ADA opportunity for people to live in the downtown area. So the, I think, I'll just say, as to the waivers, the scope of the project and the fact that we're not changing anything at all except internal would speak to our reasoning behind those waiver requests for, for this project. And again, we're kind of here on, only because we want to provide the ADA units on the bottom, and that triggers all the rest of the reviews. So happy to answer any questions, and we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. Director Mears, any correspondence?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing now for this, for any comments from the audience. Okay. Saying none, we'll close that and then open it up for anything from the board. Believe we actually jumped over the application acceptance motion earlier.
I'll make a motion to move that the site plan and conditional use permit application for Hawkins Family Reverkable Trust be accepted as complete for review.
Second.
So motion by Manager Bellmore, second from Mr. Rabides. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Nothing was a discussion.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, question. On the ADA, to understand these four units that are going here, is there a specific ADA handicap or?
Point of order, this is just on the acceptance of the application.
They have to accept us as complete, then we can get into talking about, and I'm happy to talk about that.
We'll turn to that. Thank you.
That's right, though. Thank you.
All those in favor of the application acceptance? Any opposed? All right. Thank you.
And I'm happy to jump into the answer to that.
Yep. Jumping into discussion from the board and go there.
Thank you. So the, this, there will be an architect that will be utilized for the entire project. And the architect will be qualified to make every improvement that an ADA apartment needs to have in order to qualify as that. So it will be advertised as ADA compliant. And when we do that, we then have to assure ourselves that through the use of the architect, that we have made that as, we have followed all the regulations that is associated with that. And that's what the architect would do. And there's two units, two one-bedrooms, not four.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there was a particular, again, like I said, if there was a particular requirement on the individual's handicap rating in order to qualify for that space.
There is, and that's what the architect understands, and they, they, they do that for us.
Thank you.
I don't know it, but they do.
Mr. Bellmore?
Not much I do.
Yeah, I just want, just wanted to comment on the idea of leasing parking spots, spaces. That would be, that would have to be approved by the City Council. Mr. Bobinski is, doesn't have the authority.
I absolutely agree. And if it didn't work, again, like I said, we would just put them on-site.
Mr. Whitman?
So just to make sure I understand, what is triggering the site plan review is the fact that zoning requires ground floor commercial, and because there's residential on the ground floor, that's triggering the site plan, this whole process. Otherwise, this would be purely administrative. This is a question for the planning director.
So it's, the waiver request is actually what triggers Planning Board review? I can't administer, I can't waive site plan regulations, so that's why they're, they're here.
Can you say that again? Sorry, I didn't follow.
So because there's four waiver requests, that's what's triggering review by the planning board? And also, the first floor, the two units, the conditional use permit.
Okay. So the fact that there are units on the ground floor and they're asking for waivers means this process is required by the planning board?
Yes.
Thank you. So when you say you're not modifying the exterior, I get what you're saying. You're not adding volume, not adding additions. You're not putting new cladding on. However, you are reopening up the storefront on the ground level, which is great. I guess I'm a little concerned that I don't have anything to look at to show me how you're achieving that. It just says sort of windows, and I can imagine any number of configurations in which new windows could be added to those sections, which would be...
Did you see this?
Did not see that.
Yes? I'm just asking if you did.
I did not, no.
Can I just show it to you?
Yes, please.
This was part of our application, so I can hand it around.
Okay, great. And so, looking at this, we've got, I'll pass this on the board here, but just what I have in front of me. So we have commercial in the main building, and then what used to be, I think, the chapel, a church before it was the police station, is the ADA, where the ADA units are.
Correct. Yes.
Great. That is helpful. And I would just note, are these going to be low-income or like tax credit or any sort of other subsidized housing?
No.
Okay. So I would just note that, in my experience, just because you build ADA units does not mean they'll be occupied by ADA, people that need ADA units. It is great to have that as part of the inventory. Certainly, the owner is, could specifically seek out that tenant, but just a general, a general comment.
No, I understand. That's our intent, is to have those utilized by people who need them.
That's a wonderful service. Is there, was there, in that packet, was there anything site, like you're waiving landscape completely? Because it also says you are anticipating to put in some additional plantings, but you're also asking for a waiver on...
Yeah. And I, I don't know if the board has my, my photos, because we submitted photos.
I do have the photos, and I'm familiar with the site.
Okay, yeah.
But I think in our, our review, I think it said that you, was anticipated, let's see if I can find that quote here, was anticipated that there would be recently removed some dying trees, indicated there would be additional plantings to the site, applicant is seeking planning board approval, existing vegetation meets the intended regulation. So I guess I'm just concerned, understanding that a project, even though this is small, you're going to have contractors coming in and out.
Right.
I think I'm mostly okay with using the existing vegetation that is there. Obviously, it needs to be maintained. And through construction, if anything is damaged, it needs to be at minimum replaced.
Right. I mean, nothing in this plan, and I, I agree with everything you said, so it's not a problem. But none of the construction, I mean, there, I don't know that they would really take the park as a true lay-down area because they have the, the parking area, if you will, more as a lay-down area. So I don't think there's any intent at all. They can't hear you.
Okay.
Yeah, anything would be more in that parking area. And, and yeah, obviously, if there was any disturbance to the existing vegetation, we'd replace it because we want it there. And they, you know, it's an interesting site because it kind of wraps around all different ways. And the tree, actually, that looks like it could be part of the gas station is actually on this property. So there's a lot of existing vegetation there. And one of my pictures was to show you that band within the park area, you know, that has, so we think it's pretty robust.
Thank you.
Mr. Whitman, then Mr. Richardson.
Thank you. I have the same comment about the, the parking spaces. My, again, that would have to be a request before the City Council and routed through maybe a couple of different committees there. My knee-jerk reaction is, I think you ought to be planning to put them on your site. We have limited handicap parking spaces in the downtown area. Although I generally favor the idea of leasing spaces, we've done that with other projects. It makes sense. It's more difficult when we're looking at defined ADA spaces, which we don't have many of. And if we had to relocate them, then we're looking at modifying curb cuts and, you know, van access. And it just triggers a lot of, it's a snowball. So it's more complicated there.
It was just a general conversation. That's why I said if, if it happened, great. And if it doesn't, that's fine, too. It's all set.
Perfect. Beyond that, I wholeheartedly support what's being endeavored here. We're going to take a, a building and kind of restore it to maybe closer to what it once was. I guess I didn't know there was a chapel there at one time. I knew there was a court on that end. I think maybe in both instances, people pray when they go to those places, but for different reasons, perhaps. But so I think, again, we're returning the building to what it once was. And if you think about buildings in the downtown urban core, very seldom do you find one that has such a notable green space attached to it, right? And yes, that was once a city park because it was connected to the police station and all of that. But the purchase grabbed that as well, and that is sort of a gem in the downtown, right? There are many buildings that would struggle to do anything with landscaping. So I appreciate the applicant wanting to keep that, maintain it. Certainly an important little pocket of green in an otherwise hardscaped downtown. I think the other thing that's unique about this parcel, there are very few properties in the downtown that have any... any onsite parking. Again, not an abundance of it here, maybe six to 10 spaces, depending how you configure it, but you're better off than most. And although I'll never play for the Red Sox and never did, I could throw a baseball to an abundance of parking that is free all-day parking currently. So, I, I think those issues are, are not a concern to me. You know, I think the idea of a mixed-use property is what is sort of sought after via the regulations with, you know, kind of commercial business on the first floor, residential on the second floor. But I think in many instances, I think we have to be open to the idea of residential on the first floor. There's a market for that, there's a need for that. We recently rezoned a good stretch of Main Street to allow for that. This is not far from that, so it seems to, to fit. And if I think about ADA units, unless we were to add an elevator, which would make this project rather expensive for the size it is, you got to have them on the first floor. And there is a need for ADA units in, in the region. Some of us, Housing Authority, some of you know better than I, recently did, a lot of renovations of their units, and a number of them are ADA compliant now to meet that demand that exists in the population. And I would agree with Attorney Bruton that many of the folks that would utilize these units probably don't drive cars, right? It would be the exception to the rule that they would. So, I support the, the conditional use permit. I also support the waivers. You know, I'll pick on one in particular, because it's one that sometimes generates conversation, and that's around the study of impact on the schools. Not everybody may share my opinion, but I welcome a lot more kids in our school system. We have a small enrollment now compared to what we once used to. That limits class opportunity, it limits the number of potential participants for athletics and band, and it generally lessens the educational opportunity for the existing kids. So, having more kids in our school system, I think, is a good thing at this point in time. And I draw your attention to the Sunningdale Development. I use it as my poster child for this all of the time. There are 89 homes in the Sunningdale Development, and last time I checked, they generated two kids in our school system. So, it is not a thing in the current environment. So, I just use that to wave my flag on that. So, again, so in support of all the waivers, in support of the CUP, in support of the project in general. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Richardson, Mr. Whitman?
Yeah, I was, I was going to jump on the same issue of schools that Mr. Whitman did, and again, I have no problem with it being waived. We do need as many kids as we can get in our schools right now, and that, so that's not a problem. I do have a, have a question, though. Regardless of whether or not the folks living in the ADA units will or will not be having vehicles, people in the other units could very well need handicap parking for one reason or another. We certainly have plenty of handicapped people who are driving, thus the need for handicap parking. And part of my concern is, granted, it might only be a couple of times a year when Main Street is shut down for the Children's Festival or the Pumpkin Festival or some activity like that, that people still have access to those parking spaces that are out front. And I, I know they can come in, you know, via Station Street and turn the corner and get there. However, during those times, there are often people walking in the street there, going up to the businesses and that kind of thing, sort of to extend those. Same thing if we have, you know, in the past, we've had the food trucks, and there's a lot of people downtown, and a lot of, though that area is not blocked off, there's still a lot of people walking in there. So, I want to be able to make sure that people that do need handicap parking have access to those, to those parking spaces without worrying about pedestrian traffic, if, if I may put it that way. So, that's a concern that I have, and again, it's very, just a couple times a year, maybe, but I think it's still an issue for me.
Yeah, those are, those activities are allowed by the city, and those are the city's spaces. So, if they want to restrict those activities from there, I mean, I don't think that would be helpful, the Children's Festival, but I guess the city could do it. But we have six units, and we're providing two on, on space. The ratio there is pretty, pretty high for any project. So, we're doing the best we can. I understand what you're saying, but, I mean, we can't plan, I don't know what the answer could be to that, other than the city shouldn't allow that space to be utilized by those events, but that's, I think that's unreasonable, too, to be honest, because I think there's so much parking, literally, in that parking field across the street, that handicap people who, if they're, if they're currently restricted from those spaces, there's nothing this development's going to do to create more of a problem. Those spaces, if those events occur on one or two days during the year, either restrict them or they don't. I don't remember. I've been to them, but I just can't remember how those two spaces are dealt with, but there's not much we could do about it. But, but again, I, we're, we're providing, I guess, looks like we're providing spaces on site, which is pretty good, I think.
I just wanted to bring it up. It's something that I noticed, and I, like I said, it's only a couple times a year, but it, for anybody who does need or requires a handicap parking place, it's important to them.
No, I agree, and my, I mean, my in-laws who live in town utilize those spaces, so it's important to me, too. I just, I know those events, because I've been here 30 years, and I don't think anyone's complained right now, and those events have occurred on those spaces, so I think it's okay. I think that parking field is plenty for what handicap need during that period of time.
Mr. Robitis, Mr. Belmore, and Doug?
I don't typically jump on a bandwagon and just...
Mike, I've, I've looked at that building 10,000 times, and I've often thought how nice it would be to see that building sort of brought back to what it probably used to look like. So, I am in fully support of this project. I'm really anxious to see the cleanup of that. I'm in support of the CUP and the waivers, and the last thing that I'd like to mention is that, Mr. Bruton, you mentioned that it wasn't going to be a full-fledged restaurant on that side, because you're thinking not to compete with the restaurants across the street. I look at that as another successful restaurant, full-service restaurant downtown is only a good thing. The more of those places that are downtown, and they're all feeding off each other, no pun intended, I think is a solid thing. So, I personally would love to see a full service, another full service, you know, a successful, full-service restaurant in our downtown.
We're limited a little bit by the size of that space, but we're, I mean, they're looking to be profitable, so I'm sure that all of the things you just said will, will unfold, for sure.
And that, that's all I have, but I think it's a good project, and fully support of the waivers and the CUP as well.
Mr. Belmore?
I'll say.
Can I just, again, even though I said it, I just want to say it again, because there's some aspect to this, it's the public park, or I'll say "public park" in quotes, because it's owned by my client. But I did say, and I'll just reemphasize it just for the record, that there's likely to be a very fairly small patio that he might add for the use of the people who visit the site on the commercial end or, and/or the residential, but it would not be at all intrusive to the overall effect of this as a public park, which is what he wants to maintain. He likes that aspect as well.
Yeah, just to that end, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's not currently part of what we're reviewing, so I'm assuming that's de minimis enough that it could be handled through staff, through some sort of administrative process.
Yeah, should be able to be done administratively.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other dining application, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Quickly, before we go to motions, just a couple comments that I wanted to make on this. First off, I'm, I was encouraged to see the ADA spaces mentioned in this application when it came in, something that I think more developers should be looking at, as the demographically largest part of the baby boom generation starts getting up to the age where disabilities become more common. Having units like this in a downtown space, I think, allows folks more of an opportunity to age in place without being sequestered from society, and it's something that should be greatly encouraged. I'm also very happy to hear the developers' intent to maintain a public space in that green area next to their building as part of their property. That kind of a contribution by business owners to a thriving community is something that we should welcome and encourage, and very glad to hear it here. Any other comments from the board?
I'll start the motions off. I move that the site plan and conditional use permit application for the Hawkins Family Revocable Trust does not have potential for regional impact.
Mr. Belmore?
Second.
Seconded by, sorry, I always forget your last name. Mr. Horton, thank you. I always disgrace to me. All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Waiver request. I move that the request of the Hawkins Family Revocable Trust for waiver from section 10.1.2, requirement to provide geographic study, that they be approved.
Second.
motion by Mr. Belmore, second by Mr. Robitis. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on, next to...
I moved at the request of the Hawkins Family Revocable Trust for waiver from section 10.1.3, requirement to provide drainage study be approved.
Motion by Mr. Belmore?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Horton, I think was in first. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Belmore?
I moved at the request of the Hawkins Family Revocable Trust for waiver from section 12.11, requirement to provide information on a school availability be approved.
Motion by Mr. Belmore?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Robitis. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, is that a vote?
No, that's a vote.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All those in favor of the vote? Any opposed?
I can go four for four, if you'd like. I move at the request of the Hawkins Family Revocable Trust for determination that the existing landscape meets the intent of landscaping design standards be approved.
Motion made by Mr. Belmore?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Whitman. Any discussion?
We'll go four for four, batting and baseball, but, yeah, I can do that.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Carries?
I moved at the request of the Hawkins Family Revocable Trust for conditional use permit to allow two residential units at street level be approved.
Oh, I think we need landscaping design.
Oh, I'm sorry. We just did that, didn't we?
We just did.
I double-counted schools, I'm sorry.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Belmore, seconded by Mr. Robitis. Any discussion on the CUP? All right, all those in favor? Director Mears?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Plan revisions, please show the location of the dumpster on the plan. This will need to be screened from the public view as per Chapter 11A. Dumpsters, please show onsite parking. Please note the locations of existing landscaping on the plan. The landscaping will be required to be kept in good condition. Any dead or dying vegetation will need to be replaced. Please show utility connections upon submission of the as-built records. Include a note on the plan that indicates the development complies with the current ADA standards. Please note on the plan that all commercial loading/unloading for delivery shall not use the Main Street parking. State Street or the private parking area shall be utilized to limit the infringement of traffic flow and parking. Please list all waivers granted on the plan. Conditions must be met prior to final approval. The plan shall bear the stamp and signature of a licensed land surveyor. Conditions to be completed prior to the start of site work. Construction cost estimates for the project shall be submitted to the department. A performance surety in no less than 25% of the cost of site construction. Building plans shall bear the stamp of a certified fire protection engineer licensed in New Hampshire to certify compliance with all Egress emergency lighting, smoke, heat, and CO detection systems, fire alarm monitoring and reporting systems, fire suppression systems, or any other fire protection or related life safety systems by national and/or New Hampshire code. A pre-construction meeting is required. The applicant shall apply for water and sewer connection permit. Per section 19.23.e9, the building shall display the designated address number in such a manner as to be visible from the street, which abuts the main entrance to the property. It shall be a minimum of 3.5 inches in height and must be reflective. All lighting must be downlit and shielded, and this does require as-built plans.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Under site plan application, item F, where it talks about commercial loading and unloading, I'm trying to read this, and here as I can tell, the only way they'd be able to get a delivery is with a helicopter. I'm, I'm not following what this is intending to say. A little clarity there would be helpful.
Yes, so that's a site plan regulation, to have the loading for trucks and vehicles on a side street, not on a Main Street.
Okay, so we don't want them on Main Street, we don't want them on Station Street. We've run out of streets. I guess that's, maybe it's the way it's worded, I'm not following it.
No, it says, say, "Station Street or private parking shall be utilized."
Yeah, station street's allowed, I believe.
Got it, I'm good now.
Okay, sorry.
It's late, not enough coffee, combination there.
Mr. Robitis?
If you're ready for a motion?
Absolutely.
I moved at the request of Hawkins Family Revocable Trust for a minor site plan approval for commercial, and six residential unit multifamily use at property located at five Main Street be approved with the conditions stated by Director Mears. Second.
Seconded by Mr. Belmore. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Next up for us tonight, new business item 4B, 85 Elm Street Summersworth LLC, are seeking a site plan amendment to add residential units on a property located at 85 Elm and 20 Green Street, in the business with historic and form-based codes overlay BHFBC district. Assessors map 10 lots 176 and 177, site 20-2022.
Yes, so you all should have received the staff memo. The applicant is seeking a site plan amendment to remove the underground parking garage and replace with 24 residential units for a total of 150 units within the new four-story building, and a total of 150 units on site. With the proposed revisions, there have been changes to the exterior of the building. This has been approved by the Historic District Commission at the October meeting. This application was reviewed by the SRTC. The application is complete, and you should have also received the traffic memo that was updated. Horstley Witten is still reviewing, but there was very minor changes to the drainage.
Do you have a motion, or recommend accepting?
Yes, recommend accepting as complete.
And do you have a motion to accept as complete?
No move.
Motion by Mr. Robitis, any second? Seconded by Mr. Horton, any discussion? All those in favor of acceptance? Any opposed? All right. We'll go then to the applicant.
Thank you. Good evening, Neil Hanson with Ty &amp; Bond. We're the civil engineers for the project. Also here is Ben Stebbins and Rob Prebody, the owner applicants, and our project architect, Adam Earl, is also here to go over some of the changes to the building. So, it was right into the record, we, we were here back in March for site plan approval, and since that time, the building has been redesigned to add additional units where the underground parking was previously located. The current count of residential units is 152, I believe, 150 was, was right into the record, and then with the six remaining in the existing building, that would bring the total to 158 on site. The original approval did also, one of the waivers we had originally received was for a reduction in parking with the condition that we achieve a 1.3 space per unit ratio. The applicant is still committed to achieving that ratio. There would just be a, an increase in, in off-site parking spaces. I believe they'll be able to speak to that in a little bit more detail as we, as we go through the presentation. The plans that were submitted, we had addressed the original conditions of approval in that plan set. They were A through J, and we had listed those in the cover letter that we had submitted along with the project materials. And then additionally, when we met with SRTC on December 7th, we received about 25 or so other comments, and we had revised the plans in the week post that meeting to address those comments as well. And then, as was also mentioned, we received the additional peer review from the, the traffic engineer. They had one comment related to replacing the bike storage area that was in the garage, and we had actually received that same comment from SRTC, so we were able to call that out on the, on the... on the re-submitted plans dated December 13th. I'll just quickly go through some of the changes to the site plan related to these, to the additional units. We had to make some minor modifications to the church street driveway, no longer having the driveway entering the building underneath it. We were able to smooth the grading out on that road a little bit. It's still a steep road, just given the existing condition, but we were able to make it slightly better without needing a driveway halfway down it. And then additionally, the parking lot on the south side of the building, we were able to make an agreement with the butter there to get about, I think it was six additional spaces, we were able to fit there by realigning it. That is what triggered the revisions to the drainage report that was mentioned earlier. We did have to add two additional rows to that subservice infiltration system to account for the additional paved area in that location. There was also a revision to the landscaping plan related to that where we were taking up more green space than was previously proposed, which eliminated the area that we had a few trees previously located. One of the comments we got from SRTC was related to maintaining shade trees on the site. We did go take a look at the site, and there is a tree that was slated to remain that is very dead, so we are now calling that tree out to be removed and replacing it with a new tree in a similar location. And then there was one additional tree that we converted to a few shrubs that was a stipulation of the original approval. There were no changes to the utilities, other than a couple minor comments we received from SRTC earlier this month, and that's, those are the main changes to the site plan, and I'll pass it over to Adam to go over some of the changes to the building, and then I'll be happy to answer any other questions you have about the plans, drainage, anything of that sort when we get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil, and thank you, Board. As Neil had alluded to, we had gone through the HDC in October, receiving approval for the infill of the lower-level Elm Street parking garage with units. The exterior design for that infill continued the upper-level language down to this lower level. Additionally, during that HDC approval process, there was a substitution to remove the brick and substitute it with a clavard siding. And also at the lower level, we've introduced a stamped concrete at the foundation that was part of the original HDC approval, but that language has been extended throughout the rest of the building. As far as the general configuration of the building, it's largely the same, with the exception of those comments that I had previously stated, so if there's any specific questions, we're happy to answer those, but that's the overview. Thank you.
All right, moving on then to the public hearing in this. Director Mears, any correspondence on this one?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
I'll open this up for any public comment. Anybody from the audience looking to comment on this? If you could just give us your name and address or affiliation, please.
My name is Mattenall, I'm a butter on two sides of this project. I just have some concerns. They're not wild concerns, they're just reasonable concerns. Moving forward, if the project gets full approval, I'd like to see some sort of timeline where I'd be appraised of any impact to me or my business, starting with groundbreaking utilities, outages, access to church court, and any other items that may impact my land and business as an abutter. As far as traffic, any changes or potential impacts anticipated due to the development of 85 Elm Street development? Let me know, please, in advance, so that I can appropriately accommodate that. I'd like to see, I'm concerned that there might be noise levels that will impact me and my business and my tenants. I'd like to see a schedule adhered to that does not impact myself and my property. Too early in the morning or too late in the evening, I'm sure there's rules that the town has that these will be held to. Access, I will always require or access to my property from Green Street and Church Court, and if that is not possible, an agreeable arrangement that addresses that issue, I'd also like to see access to my backyard in some fashion from Church Court or thereabouts. Lighting, I'm concerned that lighting from the project during and after construction be appropriately provided so as not to be too bright after dark. I would like to be kept abreast of all impactful events from the developer and the city that would affect access to my property as well as my utilities well in advance of these events. Parking, if my current parking is impacted, some agreeable solution be provided to me and my tenants, either by the city or the developer or both. Far as landscaping, I would like, would prefer an abutting property, which is on two sides of my property, be landscaped tastefully and with trees and shrubs that provide a visual and audio barrier between my property and the development. And finally, as a side note, any utilities such as water and sewer that are discovered on Church Court, which I suspect there might be water and sewer, be maintained when the road gets repaired. And that's it.
Any other members of the public to comment? Okay. We'll close out the public hearing and open up for questions from the board.
All right, cool. So I'm very happy to have you guys back. I was wondering when you guys were going to come back, so I'm very happy to see that things went well with the HDC. I'm happy with the compromise that you guys have struck with them. I like the design. I would have preferred brick, but I understand. But there's one thing that's giving me heartburn, guys. Last time you were here, there was a parking lot. Where did, what happened? Where did it go?
You mean the underground, like the subsurface parking?
No, 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 adjacent, adjacent to the building where the hotel is.
You mean 67 Elm?
Yeah.
Sorry, this is Rob Prebody, I'm one of the owner applicants. So 67 Elm is another great parcel for potential redevelopment. And after we had our initial meetings with the SRTC, we kind of rethought having that in the project as opposed to a source for leased off-site parking. So we have a couple different options for where our off-site parking will be, kind of verbal commitments from either property we own or landowners that are proximate to the development. We'd like to be able to reserve 67 Elm for potential redevelopment at some point in the future, but in the, you know, if we needed for parking for this site, we would lease parking spaces to this site for this project. That way, you know, their lease, it's what would be approved as part of a condition for a building permit, but if we have the opportunity to redevelop 67 Elm into something other than a parking lot, which I think would be, you know, better for the city overall, we could always come back without a site plan approval, as long as we can show that there's enough aggregate parking between the two sites at that point in time. We have no, like, present intent, it's just thinking about how to use that parcel of land for its kind of highest and best use. I think, as I said, it'd probably be a benefit to every, you know, to the public in general if that's not a parking lot forever associated with this site.
Understood, you know, and obviously it's your parcel to do as you see fit. I will say, when I was celebrating at home, when I saw the HDC, you know, I was like, "Yeah, we did it, we're there, it's going to go right through, right through planning, it's going to be great." And then I opened up the pack and said, "Where's the parking lot?" "No, now we got to go back to work," right? So I'd like to hear a little bit more about what your proposed off-street parking, your leases that you're looking to do. Or is it down on Main Street? Is it adjacent? Is it private?
Yeah, so...
It's primarily private. It's all private. It's all within probably three blocks at the most, two blocks of this, of this site.
And just to reemphasize, like, we have 67 Elm in our back pocket as a source of that off-site parking. We just don't want to necessarily lock it into the project, you know, and kind of prevent future development there.
Okay, all right, understood. Thank you.
Mr. Abidas?
My question's quick. So 67 Elm, while you're trying to decide what to do with that parcel, so first of all, I agree with you, you hate to see a parcel like that eaten up by parking. Is that building going to come down so at least the visual of your, of, you know, what you're, I mean, if you look at what you're doing, it looks great, so you just hate to see that hidden by that.
We have a demolition permit that requires the building to come down effectively this year. Kind of whether we...
2024.
2024, yeah, sorry, not 2023. My 365 days from now, yeah. So that has to happen, whether, you know, no matter what happens with that project, we have, we kind of own that liability, you know? And as I understand, the building department's very anxious for it to come down as well, so.
Okay, that's all I have.
Mr. Whiteman, then Mr. Richardson, Mr. Goodwin.
Thank you. I don't have any objection to removing the underground parking and converting that into units. I get the math. That does require you to be a little more creative with how we get to the 1.3. I do understand the idea to use some off-site spaces. Do those need to be specifically articulated as part of site plan approval to get to the 1.3? Because I know when we did the leasing of the spaces on Main Street, that was an important criteria. So does this have to be specifically called out or not?
I think that's the discussion for the board. The applicant does have, they are working on reserving spaces within walking distance of this, so I think staff could handle this administratively to make sure that we get to the 1.3.
And just from our perspective at least, you know, we're trying to avoid putting, like, long-term lease commitments in place when we don't have approvals. We'd like to handle that kind of in the period between site plan approval and the pulling of the building permit. So in other words, if we don't pull 1.3 parking spaces at that time, we're just not building 152 units, you know, that's...
Yeah, don't get me wrong, I don't have an objection to the notion of utilizing those other places. I think it's a creative way to do things.
Yep.
My question, and I'm thinking out loud here, so apologies, but if all of a sudden you have an arrangement with owner A three blocks away, owner A sells their property, and the new owner A isn't so intrigued and does not renew your lease agreement for those parking spaces, then we're not at the 1.3 anymore, where it's something less, it causes you to scramble to figure, and so how do we just navigate that? I mean, just help me with it.
I mean, that's really our risk. I mean, we're out of, you know, out of compliance effectively if we don't have enough parking spaces. We're looking to do the leases on like a long-term basis, so, you know, hopefully we're not, you know, kind of at the whim of a change in ownership. And kind of on top of that, like I said, again, we have the 67 Elm parcel that we control that, again, like, we're going to put in the pool if we can't get satisfactory leases in place.
Yeah, so I did have a condition in final plan approval that the lease agreements would have to be, they'd have to be recorded at Registry of Deeds.
A notice of lease?
Yeah.
Yeah, not the full lease.
I was going to ask, I think it's just important that we somehow memorialize this and that does that, so...
And it would need legal review as well.
Yeah.
I'm good with that. A real technical question, so, you know, a net positive out of this is that we do reduce the grade out of, on Church Street, which I've spoken about being problematic. It doesn't make it perfect, but it makes it better, so that's good. Is that vertical granite curb on Church Street when it gets reconstructed so to channel water, because it'll flow down there pretty quickly?
I had not yes from my engineer, so I'm going to...
Yeah, that, and we're putting in a couple drainage structures at the bottom of the hill there.
Got it.
So the grade, I believe it's only about a percent better, but...
It's better.
It's as good as we could do, and it's slightly better, so it's steep.
Right. But I do see the water just coming down Church Street. Once it's paved and nice and smooth, it's going to come down there pretty rapid, so I appreciate the drainage structures at the bottom.
Yeah, yeah, we have drainage at the bottom, and that'll tie into the closed drainage system that exists, and we're also upgrading that pipe all the way to Washington. That's very good.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Richardson, and then Mr. Goodwin.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I was also glad that it went by the HDC. I was, I never saw brick as necessary, but I did like the idea of a little bit more color that was on your first plan, but I'm satisfied with this one, so, I mean, it's hard, you know, it's, you're not going to hide this building downtown, so if it's going to be visible, then maybe a little color in my mind would be something that's attractive, but I'm willing to let that one go. The, I've heard something different since I got here this morning, but if, or this evening, but can you explain the dumpster situation, what that's going to be like? I mean, I'm asking for a reason, so...
Yeah, Neil can speak to that.
Yeah, so it's the same, we didn't change the configuration from the original approval. There's, we have two dumpster locations, or one location, two dumpsters, and the idea is they would be, they would be roll-out bins, so that they would have to be rolled out of the enclosure for the truck to pick them up and then put back in the enclosure.
Because I don't know why I didn't notice this earlier, because there's no way that a front-load truck would be able to pick those up where, if that's what the case was going to be without doing that, so...
Right, yeah, and they're smaller than a traditional dumpster, so the pickup frequency will likely need to be higher than it, you know, maybe at a typical apartment building.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that response, so that solves my issue. Thank you.
Mr. Goodwin, then Mr. Horton.
Thank you. Question on, just to make sure that my math is mathing here, original proposal is 128. You're converting the parking level to 14 additional apartments, and then you're picking up 10 units from reconfiguring your existing unit layouts. Is that math correct?
The basement, the lower level's 11 units.
11 units, so you're picking up 11 units in the parking level, and then the 13 additional units are from reconfigured layouts.
Correct.
Okay. So the unit size has shrunk, is what I'm getting at here, just for matter of record.
Yes, they were oversized units previously.
Yeah, they were large one bedrooms, yep.
Yeah, we've made them, you know, more...
Market.
Exactly.
Yes, okay. And I believe the breakdown was six, so you're targeting 200 and, what was the map, 206 parking spaces, is that right? Total for 158 units?
That sounds right.
And you have 147 secured, so you're on the hunt for 59 more parking spaces approximately. I'm fine with the off-site lease arrangement. I've done that in my day job in a very similar context to this. 59 is a lot. I'm glad to hear that you already have some leads. I guess my inclination is when we, I guess for the benefit of the board, I've done this before on several projects where we get approval conditional on securing off-site parking, and it is the risk of the owner to secure that parking, and then it is somehow, the city has somehow has a clawback or authority on enforcing that that lease is maintained or we, the owner then provides parking in some other fashion. So I'm generally comfortable with that. I think the provisions Michelle has called for with the recording of the notice is good. I think for me, in terms of timing on when that comes, just because it is so many spaces, if it were like 20 spaces, I would be less worried about them figuring it out, but because it's so many, I think the community and the, I personally, would like to have a sense of security sooner than later that those spaces are secured, so I guess we'll figure that out when we get to the motion section, but figuring out when that needs, those leases need to be secured by, to me, is the biggest sort of hang-up there. The other comment I have is that this, I actually really like the revised design, I think it's an improvement, so congratulations on that. On the landscape plan, and I didn't keep... on that. On the landscape plan, and I didn't keep my prior packet, so I apologize, but I seem to recall that there was slightly more vegetation along Elm Street. On that elevation of the building, you're effectively a six-story structure, you're five stories of inhabited space, and then you have an egress level with doors, so it's quite imposing. I know it's an urban site. I'm not too worried about the height of the structure necessarily, but you, it's a very unforgiving street experience on Elm, and I think that would be greatly improved by additional plantings. And right now, I'm seeing two trees, sort of along Elm, and a couple shrubs around a transformer, and a couple trees on the corner of Church. So I'm more worried about the, sort of the gaps. There's a lot of gaps here in terms of screening or softening up the edge of, of this condition a bit. I was wondering if you could speak to that.
I don't have the old plan in front of me either, but I do not believe we removed any landscaping from Elm Street from the prior approval.
Would you be open to putting some shrubs or plantings in here? What's the ground cover assumed to be in these locations?
I would just be, right now, it's just grass.
So you'd have grass here, and you'd have someone go out there and weed whack the foundation of this building?
Yeah.
I mean, that-
Well, so where, yeah, where we can.
Do you have any proposals?
I don't love it. I mean, I'm not a landscape architect.
The concrete goes right up to the face of the building for eighty percent of the building, so it's concrete right up to the building, no-
So that, oh, that's a walkway?
It's a sidewalk, yeah.
Oh, okay, this makes a little more sense now, and doesn't help. Um, uh, you don't have to mow it, you don't have to-
I think that's to help you.
Got it, okay, yeah, because it's egress. That makes sense. Okay, well, listen, you've got some planting beds here, now I see this. I would, I would highly encourage you, and I think this can be done administratively, to put some tall shrubs. I'm not asking for trees, or, or some, something there to soften up that edge, because you're gonna go from six-story building essentially, to sidewalk, to tiny little planting bed, to street and parking, and it's, it's, and it's an urban site. I'm fine with that. I just think you could do a, a small lift here, a couple thousand bucks in plants, and it will make a world of difference.
We're, we're open to that. If possible, we'd like it to be administrative, just kind of administrative.
Absolutely, yeah. I'm good, thanks.
Mr. Horton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too agree with the, the amendments to the plan. Not included was the original lighting plan. I'm just kinda curious if you could talk to the additional, will the lights remain that we talked about on Elm Street? I think we talked about four or five additional light bases going down through Elm Street. Just wanted to make sure that that was defined in the off-site improvements.
So it looks like the original photometric plan didn't make it into the set, but the, the intent would be the same as the original, because the layout of the parking area didn't, didn't change, there shouldn't, I think, was it building lighting or? It was poles, yeah, so the, the intent would, would be the same as the original improver, original approval. Yeah, I think, I think one of the original conditions was, had something to do with adding lighting on Elm, on Elm Street side as well.
And I just, I just, my last comment was, throughout the project, can we just maintain good communications with the planning department to ensure that all the abutters are informed on progressing the project and any impacts that may become before them? Thank you.
And I assume there'll be like a construction mitigation and management plan of some sort as well, which we're obviously comfortable with.
Yes, thank you. I think the abutters' comments regarding site lighting, I think, are addressed by the prior plan set. You know, we are, we, we do look at a photometric plan. It can't allow light to bleed onto surrounding properties. Our requirements require that all lighting be downlit and shielded. I'm sure we ferreted that out when we went through the original plan set, so I'm comfortable with, with what we approved there. I, I think his requests are simple, to be notified if there's gonna be road closure on Church Street, or if there's gonna be any utility impacts. I'm gonna trust in our processes here in the city with excavation permits, utility connection permits, and those sorts of things, that our public works and engineering staff would be mindful of notifying the abutters of any impacts there, so, but just sharing it publicly here to, to be mindful of that. Mr. Nola is right, that he does have a fair amount of access need off of Church Street. Obviously, when we reconstruct that, there's gonna be an impact. I think he recognizes that and just wants some notice so that he can plan accordingly there. I think it's a reasonable request that he has, and again, I'll lean on our processes to, to navigate that, so, thank you.
Here are the discussion from the board. Looking for a motion then around regional impact?
I move that the application does not have regional impact.
Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Robides. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Director Mears, don't believe there's any other waivers requested here, but your friends are with us?
None this evening.
Walk us through the site plan items or motions then, please?
Yes, so plan revisions, revised sheet one of one by Horizons be updated for lot one seventy-six to reflect the applicant owners, the property and the ownership of Church Court to be updated as a city owned right away. Please update G dash one hundred notes under grading and drainage notes number eight for the contractor to confirm with the city staff the condition of the manhole in Washington Street. The structure may need to be replaced or upsized. The storm drain connection, if in a poor condition, at the developer's expense. Any outstanding comments from third-party review completed by Horstley Winton for the drainage report shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the Director of Planning and Community Development. Any, all outstanding comments associated with site plan amendment from third-party review from Vanessan Associates will be addressed to the satisfaction of the Director of Planning and Community Development. Landscape shall be added to Elm Street, which will be addressed to the satisfaction of the Director of Planning and Community Development. Conditions that must be met prior to final approval. Applicants shall provide draft lease agreements and site plan identifying off-street parking prior to the final endorsement of plans. These lease agreements will be required to the review by City's legal. An escrow shall be collected in an amount of one thousand or as determined by the Director of Planning and Community Development to cover the cost of review. All parking lease agreements licensed and associated site plan shall be recorded at Stratford County Registry of Deeds prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. This shall also include access parking units from map ten lot one seventy-eight. The final plan shall bear the stamp and signature of an engineer, licensed land surveyor, and landscape architect. All federal and state permits shall be in place before signing of the plans and recording. Conditions to be completed prior to the start of site work. Construction cost estimate for the project shall be submitted. Building plan shall bear the stamp of a certified fire protection engineer licensed in New Hampshire to certify compliance with all egress, emergency lighting, smoke, heat, and CO detection systems, fire alarm monitoring and reporting systems, fire suppression systems, or any other fire protection-related safety systems required by National or New Hampshire Code. A pre-construction meeting is required. An escrow account in the amount set by the city's contract engineer agreeable to the Department of Development Service will be established for site inspections. A performance surety in the amount agreeable to the Department of Development Services, but no less than twenty-five percent of the cost of site construction, will, will be established. The applicant shall apply for a new water and sewer connection permit. Erosion control shall be properly installed prior to any construction. All applicants requiring a stormwater management and erosion control plan shall submit relevant pollutant, pollutant accounting information to their Director of Planning and Community Development. The applicant shall obtain all applicable permits through the Department of Public Works. This shall include, but not limited to, driveway permit, utility poles, license entrenched permits. Landscaping, survival security for ten percent of the total cost of landscaping. The structures will require new address assignments. Please submit a request for a new address to the city engineer. Per section nineteen point two-three dot E dot nine, the building shall bear, shall display the designated address number in such a manner to be plainly invisible from the street, and it shall be three point five inches in height and be reflective. Conditions applicable during and after construction, a copy of the completed stormwater inspection and maintenance log shall be provided to the Department of Development Services annually before July first. All landscaping shown on the plan shall be maintained, and any dead or dying vegetation shall be replaced. All outdoor lighting shall be downlit and shielded. All conditions listed in the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three site plan twenty dash twenty twenty-three and CUP one dash twenty twenty-three notice of decision shall remain applicable to the project. Proper backfall devices shall be installed prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy, and as-built plans will be required.
I move that the request of eighty-five Elm Street Summersworth LLC for site plan amendment to remove the underground parking and add twenty-four additional residential units for a total of one hundred and fifty-two units within the four-story building, and a total of one hundred and fifty-eight, fifty-eight units on-site to be approved with the conditions here stated within the director's memo.
Mr. Horton, do you have a second? I think Mr. Goodwin, sorry. All right.
Discussion point?
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the condition here about the March fifteenth conditions of approval. You know, if anybody's watching at home, yeah, this is a big project. We did a lot of work back in March to get to where we are today. This is just addressing those additional units and some of the parking, and just, I think, reiterating some of the more important conditions of approval. But I know that March fifteenth conditions of approval, a significant discussion point. I, I just wanna allay the fears of residents in the area that they do have a condition to submit a, I think it's a pest mitigation plan, concerned about, you know, disrupting, you know, less-than-desirable animals in the area during this construction project. So that's still in effect, according to this. So, thank you.
No swarms of rats, yes.
Yeah.
We're cats, yeah.
Or any-
It's, it's, yeah, balance, right. Cats and rats.
All right, so motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Excellent.
Done.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully, we don't see you again, because you've got shovels in. Thank you. All right, moving on next to new business item four C. Bridgestone Retail Operations LLC are seeking, seeking a site plan amendment to remove the rear door closure requirement on a property located at four-four-two High Street, map thirty-eight, lot three, site twenty-one dash twenty twenty-three. I believe we need a motion to accept this. I don't know if we do. Please. Director Mears?
The planning board approved the site plan to construct a six-thousand-square-foot motor vehicle repair facility in June twenty twenty. Applicants sought a waiver from section eleven point six point D, which is now twelve point six. Oh, sorry.
In the current regulations, the buffer yard requirements Class B, the waiver from this requirement was granted with the following conditions attached. There shall be an eight-foot vinyl fence installed in place of the six-foot wooden stockade. The rear door shall remain closed during business operations with the exception of vehicles entering and exiting. The existing vegetation on the northeast side of the lot, along the property line between the applicant's property, map thirty-eight, lot five, shall be preserved in an effort to retain a buffer from the commercial use. The site received a special exception to permit the use of motor vehicle repair garage station. The zoning board of adjustment during their meeting attached the following conditions. During the site plan review, the planning board shall pay special attention to the noise of the garage and its impact on the residential neighborhoods, both on High and Middle Street, as well as traffic flow on Middle Street. The existing vegetation on the northeast side of the lot, along the property line between the applicant's property, map thirty-eight, lot five, shall be preserved in an effort to retain a buffer from the commercial use. The applicant has been before the planning board for a compliance hearings regarding this condition of approval with the doors being remained closed during business operation. The applicant is seeking amendment to the site plan by requesting to move the following condition of approval for the buffer wire, buffer yard waiver. The rear door shall remain closed during business operations with the exception of vehicles entering and exiting.
Do you have a motion to accept the application as complete for review?
So moved.
Mr. Horton, any second? Seconded by Mr. Robides. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? All right, excellent. Thank you. I'll invite the applicant to speak.
Thank you very much. My name is Patrick Casella, area manager, Firestone Complete Auto Care, specifically the one here in Summersworth. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak today and accepting this, this hearing to amend the condition of our site plan agreement, requiring us to keep our bay doors shut in the rear of our building. The reason why we are seeking this approval here is based on a couple different factors here. First and foremost is just the number of hearings that have been called to versus the amount of notifications that we've received from residents regarding those bay doors being open. To my understanding, that condition is in place to protect the residents from noise. I think that that's very clear, as that's why that amendment, excuse me, that condition is in place. And I believe on, in twenty twenty-two, we received a notification from a resident that the bay doors were open, causing noise, which is a disruption. Completely understandable, completely warranted, and we took swift action to correct said issue, placing signage inside of our building, heightening the awareness around our procedure and policies in place with doors being shut, and even putting a timestamp on said policy as well. The second time that we were called in front of Ufind people was a couple of months ago, I believe in June of this year, where the city of Summersworth actually made us aware that we were violating our site plan agreement, and it was not a, an actual resident. Again, I commend the city for holding businesses accountable, quite frankly, for their site plan agreements. It speaks to your integrity, and I truly respect that. However, I do feel that point of that condition is to protect the integrity of, of the sound and, and making sure that the residents are not interrupted or impacted by said sound of aircools, cars, whatever that noise may be that we're using to repair vehicles. So that would be the first. It's just a number of, of simple escalations, if you will, okay? Now, I want to make it very, very clear to this board and to the residents of Summers, Summersworth, excuse me, that this will not change the behavior if this is granted, that this is removed from our site plan agreement. We will still have heightened awareness of our bay doors. We will still ensure that they are shut in a timely fashion, and there will no longer simply be a restriction that's enforced by, by Summersworth that requires us to keep them shut. The behavior will remain, it's just that piece in our site plan agreement that we would like to have removed. We also would like you guys to utilize the resources that you are currently using to police this site plan agreement and this particular condition elsewhere as well, so it kind of makes everyone's life a little easier, I guess you can call it, right? So that is my, is my case, I guess you can call it, in regards to amending this condition in our site plan agreement, and I'll open it up for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Director Mears, do we have any correspondence on this matter?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. We'll open up the public hearing. If there's any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please feel free.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Jessica Brackett, and I reside at three Shabbat Street. Let me first be clear, the disturbances does not equate to the number of escalations he's outlined. The disturbances are frequent and are severe. As a neighborhood at the time of the original planning approval, we express concern about another garage being built so close. The concession was made to keep the rear garage doors shut. There were multiple waivers and very few conditions. This was an important one to the sanctity of our neighborhood, which is close, as you will hear tonight. And Firestone, known to you as Bridgestone Rental Retail Operations, has not been respectful of that agreement, often leaving their doors open, so the requirement should be enforced more strictly, not be allowed to be removed. I have an unobstructed line of sight to their garage doors and security lights from my living room. Many of us in the neighborhood are denied the enjoyment of our own property as we're subjected to loud impact drivers, banging of metal on metal, and mechanics yelling while in our homes and in our yards, not to mention that they use the neighborhood as their personal test track, which requires that they illegally turn left into our cul-de-sac-
test track, which requires that they illegally turn left into our cul-de-sac with a right-turn-only sign right in front of them. I've personally watched them do so numerous times, and often on the same day, different vehicles with excessive noise and speed, testing what's wrong with these vehicles. I strongly recommend that Firestone be denied the removal of the rear door closure requirement. It's a very reasonable expectation, and just because we are courteous and try to be tolerant does not mean that we have not been disturbed. It is excessive, and the number of escalations do not represent what they have done to our neighborhood, and I would ask that you would more strictly enforce this requirement. Thank you.
I am David Parker, 1 East Street. One thing I would ask, there have been a number of complaints where they have not abided by the rules that were established by your committee. Is there any way of having an escalation to the consequences for their violations? It appears that they are quite willing to violate the ordinance, and if there is some means of making it more painful each time they violate it, that would be appreciated, and I certainly hope that you don't vote to take away that requirement to protect our quiet neighborhood from the noise.
Hello, everybody. Andre Marknow, 6 East Street. A lot of things I have on my paper were already mentioned. We walk our dogs several times a day around the neighborhood. We didn't check today, but the last two days, walked by, doors wide open. Our quality of life has changed dramatically since that's gone in from, I'm not up here just to complain about having a commercial building, but the impacts. Their lights are so high that they shine into many of our houses. They leave the doors open, the impact wrenches, everything she's mentioned is all loud. I also want to say, we see when they turn left all the time, and they go fast around our neighborhood. It really got me mad the other night when my daughter had to grab her granddaughter, which is my granddaughter. My wife had to grab the other one, and I ran the other side because people were whipping around the corner of the street. We know they're not neighbors, they're not visitors. They're the ones that are always testing their cars around the neighborhood constantly. Those doors are open almost all the time in the spring, summer, and fall, in our Warren Bays in the winter. So if you take a drive-by, peek over, they're probably open. So what he's saying that that's watched and regulated is completely untrue. Also, you know, we have a pool. My wife works from home. We have nice doors that go right out, so we've always loved that, so we, you know, can hear nature and everything and concentrate on the work. Now, it is so loud with everything. We have to keep those beautiful doors closed at all times because it's just such a nuisance. And I'm kind of appalled that a $29.48 billion company is a little bit inconvenienced by this, and they agreed to these terms, and now they want to change them. It's so unfair to the residents that's affecting all of our quality of life for them not wanting to be bothered by the police and ignoring what your rules were put forward and just doing their own thing there, and nothing ever gets done about it. Let's see, what else? I think most of the other stuff is, oh, and the other thing, the sound. They did do what they were supposed to do and put the vinyl fence up in trees, which we all, we've heard people saying the buffer here. Many people have that same issue with buffers, and they have done it, but a vinyl fence offers little or no sound protection. They also do not maintain that property at all. It goes all year without being mowed, weed-whacked, anything. They put signs on the corner of the sidewalk so you cannot see when you're pulling out to your right to pull out on the high street, which is a busy street. And when we moved there a little over seven years ago, you could walk the dog, everyone walked around, we know all the neighbors, most of us are friends. The kids ride bicycles around. Now, we can't do any of that because of the added traffic. It's actually a safety issue now because of all these people going through, and we're all concerned. We don't have sidewalks in neighborhoods, so that is what we have to walk around, you know, other than on, being out on the busy high street. So please, please, don't let this pass for them to do this. It's just really affecting the quality of life. We love the town. We love how people have a say here, and you guys really listen. We really appreciate it, so we hope you'll listen to us. Thank you.
And there's really not a whole lot more that I have to say, other than I want to make sure that I put my two cents worth in and tell you I'm not happy with anything in the way this has worked. And I was one of the ones that started talking about the buffer zone, and I don't know what happened, but my side is still good, but other side of the trees are completely dead. It's wide open. I can see that whole fence from the backside of my house. I put in a big garage, I mean, a big porch. I can't sit out there anymore. Before they were there, I could sit out there in the morning, have a cup of coffee, and enjoy it. All I hear is banging and smashing and 5:30 in the morning, hearing metal getting clanged around all over the place. Don't try to get rid of the thing. Don't change it. I would be a lot better if you would increase the problem, I mean, not the, you know what I mean. Anyway, that's all I have to say. I just, it is irritating, very irritating, and that's it. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew where I felt. Thank you.
Hi, Cindy Pereski, 27 Rule Street. I've been living in that neighborhood for 20 years. As you maybe, may or not know, it's a one-way to come in and one-way to go out. I walk my dog. There are no sidewalks in that part of the street. I'll be walking by, the doors will be open. Frequently, I do see vehicles pull out of that back area, come the wrong way down the street, race around our neighborhood, and pull back in. They're testing their cars out. The doors are open. They don't care. There may be signs in there, but taking this one restriction away, it should be further enforced. There should be more enforcement, and we got a stop sign, and they're getting, they're disrupting our lives. It is not safe in our little neighborhood. Again, I've been there for 20 years, and it's not the same neighborhood anymore since the tire shop has moved in. So, thank you.
In full agreement of all the neighborhood opinions that have already been voiced, I'd just like to bring to the group's attention as well that this is not the first time that we've dealt with noise from vehicle repair and tire shops in our neighborhood. About eight to 10 years ago, there was an issue with some subletters on the back of what was then Bread &amp; Butter, which you may now know as the Bali State House property, and we had substantial issues with unmitigated auto repair at that time. As I understood the situation then, they weren't properly permissioned to be doing that work at all. So the process was a little bit more streamlined to get it taken care of, but it was still many months that we could not go out into our yards, have a casual conversation, because I couldn't, from here to you, I could not hear members of my family speaking to me because of the noise. And the only change since that time has been the removal of buffer zones and an increase of the ability of the auditory impact to be transmitted into our yards and into our home spaces. And just to touch on the point that the manager made earlier, if the enforcement is removed, any promises of continued behavior hold no weight because our ability to have recourse to address those infractions in their disregard to how that we live in these places that have been established for many decades before they even got approved will be taken away. So we desperately need the ability to have a recourse to address these issues. In addition to the fact that they agreed prior to breaking ground to any construction being made that said, yes, this is a very reasonable way that we can conduct our business. So the fact that they have infected, or they have so many infractions just speaks to the fact that they're not being true to their word throughout this whole process. And I would like to voice, another voice of agreement that if there's any way that we can increase the penalties, I think perhaps maybe we could see some improvement in their behavior at that point, but it doesn't leave much hope on our end, certainly at the time. So thank you for your time, and I hope that you're hearing more voices to say this can't go forward.
My name is Josh Barrow. Me and my wife actually recently, in the last, I want to say, six months, we recently moved to Summersworth. We moved to Rule Street, and that actually, the Firestone being there, actually came up with a conversation with our Realtor. You know, I asked her about noise, and she brought up, you know, the rule where they have to keep the doors shut. So we thought most of the noise would be coming from Walmart, you know, right in our backyard, not a big deal, but that was completely false. It's coming from that Firestone that's, you know, right over there. I do notice sometimes the doors are open. I don't see cars pulling out at that time. And I don't know about any of you guys, but, you know, a sign with no penalty, it doesn't really stop anything from happening. I can look at a sign, and I can just ignore it, and if there's no punishment for it, then no, there's nothing stopping me from doing whatever I'm not supposed to be doing. But, I mean, that's all I have to say, and, you know, I think we should, like they said, increase the penalties for it, so.
My name is Lori Marknow, and I live at 6 East Street. And when we moved here in 2016, I was really excited to move to this wonderful city. We came from a town of 220 people. It was really hard to convince my husband to come here. He wanted a house with a barn, and I fell in love with his beautiful cape on 6 East Street. The first few years were wonderful, and then when Firestone moved in, our little friendly neighborhood completely changed. I have the benefit of working remotely. When I purchased, well, excuse me, when my husband and I purchased this house, I did not purchase it knowingly that I would have to keep my beautiful French doors closed because I can't hear the people on the other end. And I work as a billing specialist. I may be advocating for many of your medical bills that are not getting paid, and they can't hear me, I can't hear them, they hang up. On some days, I'm forced to go into the office more frequently because I'm like, oh, my God, I got too many important calls to make, too many appeals to make. So it is just disrupting my life and my professional life. As my husband stated earlier, we have a pool. It's really hard to enjoy your pool when you have all this banging. What Firestone may be unaware of is that when their doors are open, we can even hear their phones ringing. They also do not take in respect the neighborhood, the land. They can go a whole year, which, by the way, I have pictures of, and the weeds are literally this high. But isn't it convenient that they just remodeled and, well, I should say remodeled, re-landscape just before this big, you know, town meeting? And then I guess the other thing is that it's just so disruptive to our lives and everything that all our neighborhood has said is 100% validated. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments? All right. We'll close the public hearing. Open this up for the board. Mr. Weddeman, and then Mr. Berry.
Where to start, because it's a bit of a storied path here, right? So I believe twice we have held in these chambers in front of the planning board compliance hearings with Firestone and the representative that is here tonight. Those are generated when violations of our site plan approval process, and you heard with some of the prior applications here tonight, there are conditions of approval. A condition of approval with this project among many is to keep the rear doors shut. Those concerns of the door being open are identified by our code enforcement officer, not the police. So I don't want the public thinking that the police aren't spending their time looking for these issues. They're not. It's our code enforcement office, sometimes just on what I'll call active investigation, you know, out and about, looking around in the community. And in many cases, it's driven by a complaint by a citizen, by a planning board member, city councilor, other city staff member. In the most recent compliance hearing that we held, it was noted that the door being open was identified by our code enforcement officer. And the discussion that arose at that meeting was, is this really an issue of noise in the neighborhood or not, or is it just a nuisance issue because the code compliance officer knows the doors are supposed to be shut? And I suppose our conjecture around that was enough to have the applicant say, well, maybe it is just a nuisance issue for code enforcement, and it's not an issue for the neighborhood. Does not appear to be the case. I was a betting man. I think I know that the doors being open does create noise to the surrounding and neighborhood. I'll be frank, I've been on the planning board for a long time. That is an odd condition of approval to have a door remain shut for the very reason we're here tonight. It is difficult to enforce upon employees, and I do applaud the applicant. I do believe that you're trying, whether you've posted signs, you've had meetings, trainings, what have you. The weakest link in any project is the human element, right? And I suspect you're like many where there's a bit of an ebb and flow of employees in and out, right? It's hard to maintain a consistent workforce in just about any work environment these days. That just compounds this particular issue. So obviously, I can't support this tonight. It doesn't make any sense. It seems as though the noise is an issue. I know that we had the new Jeep dealership that's being built on Route 108 in front of us six, eight months ago now, and we heard from Abutters then, because that abuts a residential neighborhood as well. Certainly not as close as this store is, but it's a much bigger building, and it abuts. And we had a robust discussion then about their door. They have one door that faces out back. You will drive in and then access, I think it's 18 service bays inside through that one rear door. So it's one door, and that dealership is both radiant floor heat and the space where the mechanics will work is air-conditioned. So the, I guess, desire to keep the door open is less in that environment. And we heard from the representatives of the dealership then, too, that they use fire, they don't use many pneumatic tools anymore in their business. They use battery-operated tools, which tend to be quieter and things of that nature. So there was really a strong effort to suggest that that's going to be managed. So I don't think we put this door closure requirement on them. And I know we've talked with you before about, you know, if you air-condition that space, that would help. I think you've added fans, maybe that helps a little bit, but it's an issue that's going to require ongoing work. I think certainly removing this requirement doesn't help the cause. So that's a long way to say, yeah, I'm not going to change the requirement.
Mr. Berry?
Thank you. First off, thank you all for coming out. You know, up to this point, you know, we've met with Bridgestone. You know, it's been a one-sided deal, you know? I don't live there, right? You do, right? We always know that having a business with an open door facing the neighborhood, it's going to project sound. We just don't know how loud it's going to be. You know, and I suppose thinking about Councilor Widdes- You know, and I suppose, thinking about Council Wytham's statement there, with the Jeep dealership, the bay door is facing, it's not even facing the same direction as the houses behind it. So it's not quite the same, where these guys, it's literally facing straight at them, which is a problem, right? And I know things have been done, you've tried to do as much buffer space as you can, you put up the fets. I don't know if that's true or not, you know, what you say, that the vinyl actually reduces sound, or it doesn't, I don't know. I know efforts have been made. I applaud that. Question is, is it enough, right? And I know as long as I've been on this board, I remember when it was approved, I remember at the time I wasn't feeling really great about it. You know, I wasn't a big fan of the doors in the back. And every time that you'd been called back, I've thought about it more and more, and I say, I think we got it wrong. I think we got it wrong. I don't think there should be doors on the back of that building at all, to be frank. And I don't know what is in our abilities as a planning board, considering the site plan's already been approved. I don't know if we have the ability to say, we need to turn those doors into a wall. Lock them? Sorry, they're windows now, they're no longer usable. Let me ask you, what are your thoughts about just having it be one side?
I think that that, I think the noise, and trying to eliminate the noise completely is, in that particular circumstance, I don't think is the solution. I think based off of the doors being in the back and the operations of our business, and protecting the integrity of our customers who are coming into our stores, and providing a safe work environment for our employees, removing those doors, I think heightens that a bit. That would require us driving through one bay to another bay to then properly lift the vehicle in the air, which could cause room for, you know, safety concerns, complacency issues. So I do believe that removing those bay doors in the rear is not the solution to this. I truly do believe that if this is, for whatever reason, declined today, the next course of action that Firestone would take would getting timers on the doors to close automatically within a certain timeframe. I believe we agreed to a five-minute window, which could be shortened to, heck, a 45-second window, meaning the car can pull out of that pretty quick, and that can close pretty automatically, which I think would be the next step that we would take. But to suggest that we can remove the noise to zero based on the natural course of operations, even with the front doors being open, I do believe you're going to get a little bit of sound in the back of that building. Also, there is another, you know, not necessarily next to our building, but a stone throw or baseball throwaway from our shop there is the Monroe store, that is a couple of, I don't know, football field away, maybe less, that also impacts, yep, but that also, that also could impact the noise as well, although not necessarily as close to the residents as us, but still contributes to mechanical noise. So I, to answer your question, I don't believe removing the doors in the rear is the solution. I think timers would be that next step that we would take.
Right. And I'm not suggesting that your decibel level be zero. We understand you're a business, right? However, I mean, we got, you also need to be aware that what may be considered normal sound to a mechanic can be excruciating to a resident, right? And that's what it comes down to, is working in good faith with your neighbors, right? And that's why we're all here, right? Yeah. So, I know last time you were here, I remember saying it, I personally recommended that you look at overhead doors with timers. I think no matter what, depending on what we talk about today, that you do that.
Yeah, of course.
And, yeah, I mean, and I would make that time as small as possible. 45, it's okay. I'd like to be even less, right? So keep those doors as closed as possible for their sake, because they have the right. They have patios, they have pools. If they can't be out there and enjoy their property, what's the point of living there, right? So be courteous of your neighbors, regardless of what we talk about.
Yeah. And to echo that point, I mean, the last thing we want to do is impact people's lives, right? You come home from work, you go home, you want to relax, you want to open your patio doors, you want to go swimming in your pool, you want to do all those things that these fine people behind you want to do. The fact that we're impacted, obviously, is a problem. It's an absolute problem, and we're going to do anything in our power to address it. Removing those back doors is not the solution. It's not the solution at all.
All right. Mr. Bellmore?
Yeah, a few comments. Maybe others may recall this, but I, last time you were here for a compliance hearing, I seem to remember that you said your mechanics would not be driving around the neighborhood testing the cars.
Correct.
But testimony today is different.
Correct.
And to speak to Council Wytham's point, it seemed like our code compliance officer was noticing this. I've called it into the code compliance officer. I know David has also. I would just encourage, not that I want all the neighbors to become code compliance officers for the city, but if, every now and then, if you could call into the code compliance office, identify yourself and what the issue is, so we can track this, because there's nothing we can do other than revoke the site plan itself and impose the condition under, you'd have to reapply for modification of your site plan if we revoked it, or a new site plan, and would require you to put those timers in. So I would encourage the residents to call every now and then when you see those issues. I'll also be talking to my police department about, you know, a directed patrol going in there from time to time to try to, you know, make sure that the mechanics are not speeding and are compliant with the directional in regards to that small neighborhood. So there's no penalty that we can impose other than revoking the site plan, and we're going to need some documentation to substantiate that type of legal move. So that's what I would suggest as we move forward.
Yep. And to speak on that modified test drive map, the direction that we've given the staff, which I have personally witnessed, is to drive right out of, onto, I believe that is High Street, into the Walmart parking lot, which gives us enough time to identify potential issues.
Just one further.
Any sort of irregular driving would happen safely in a potentially empty parking lot down towards the end of the Walmart, kind of behind the Monroe, if you will, to take it, A, away from the residents, and B, keeping our employees safe, not doing that on a very busy road as High Street is.
Just as a follow-up, I would agree with the residents. Monroe Muffler has been there. I've been here over 20 years, and I've never had a complaint about Monroe Muffler's creating noise to any of the neighborhoods, so I would concur with their, you know, their comments. Now, you go ahead.
Mr. Goodwin, then Mr. Richardson, then Mr. Robides. Mr. Horton?
Thanks. Yeah, I'm definitely not in favor of appealing this, and I would go a step further in saying that I think what I'm hearing based on the lived experience of these abutters is that not only was, you know, maybe we were a bit shy when this was originally approved, and how to mitigate noise, but I'm going to go a step farther and say, I think our zoning shouldn't allow these type uses this close to residential anymore. This is not the first, this is not the first noise complaint we've gotten, as noted. You know, we want to be business-friendly, we want a diversified tax base to take burden off of our residents, but not at the expense of the residents' day-to-day lived lives. And, you know, just observationally, High Street filled with car repair and auto washes is not the most agreeable place. Obviously, we need those services, but I think the town has more than enough of them already, and it would be in favor of updating our zoning to limit future development in this context. One question I have is that I did notice on Middle Street, I believe, which is the little segment near Rule Street, there is, on Google Street View, there are some like abreviated plants planted along the fence line. Are those, do you know if those are still in place?
I don't know exactly what you're referring to in terms of the plant name. We do have Northeast Landscape that now controls our landscaping. It's been in effect as of late or early, excuse me, early June or late May. They control our landscaping at this point.
These are like little, like evergreen pine tree-looking things. They're there. And are they, maybe the community, are they taller than the fence now, or are they still fence-like? Okay.
Back, are you talking in regards to the back of the building where the fence, the final fence is?
Yeah, the site plan, you have a parking lot, a fence, and then behind the fence, your property line, there's not much space. So I think there's a planting strip there that's controlled by the city. Does anyone know?
We, I believe we maintain that, just out of courtesy.
Yes. Can I just speak to this, Mr. Chairman? So there was, they were out of compliance for their landscaping, so Shane actually sent them a notice of violation on that as well. They did replant some of their landscaping during the summer. That's what the abutters were referring to. I have not gone out and checked along the fence, but...
Okay. I'm just, what I'm getting at here is that there is a strip of land behind your fence that may be an opportunity to, with the correct planting, get a slightly taller evergreen plant there that's taller than your fence, that will help shield some of the light and sound going into the neighborhood. And that should be a pretty low-cost way to help mitigate some of these concerns. Obviously, monitoring the doors is the key issue here, but anything you can do to sort of help yourself out, I think that would be something to look into.
Yeah, absolutely. I would say that that would be absolutely an option, we would definitely explore. We have a landscaping company that can get that done pretty easily. I would say the only, I guess, delay on that would probably be the cold weather.
Yeah, it's not going to happen until spring. But anyways, just a note on that. But unfortunately, I'm not in favor of your motion.
Mr. Richardson, then Mr. Robides. Mr. Horton, after that. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just down the road in Dover, where the oil change business is, I've been there several times, trying to remember the name of it, but I've been there several times. But, right, exactly. Thank you. When you're waiting outside, the door's open, you go in, I don't know if it's on a timer or if it's a thoughtful employee, you go in, they close. When the door is open in the front, you drive out, they close before you even take the right. They're coming down. And again, whether they're on timers or not, I don't know, but there's some thought there and to be responsible for their neighbors. I don't know why you can't do the same thing. When you were here before, you said you put up the signs, you said you've had training, and all the employees have been made aware, and maybe it is a turnover in staff that's a problem, but I'm sure there's some kind of a floor manager. And if the floor manager is not taking care of that, that person should be fired. And maybe then the message will get through. Maybe the onus is not just on us or the neighbors, the onus is on you to make it work. So you have to make your employees responsible. And if that means getting rid of them and placing with someone who gets the message, you do that. And you make people responsible for their job. And if they're not, then I'm sorry, they got to go. And I'm not saying that it's you, because I know you've been here a third time now, and you don't want to be here, but you're not there every day either. So somebody has to be made responsible. Anyway, the other thing, the other thing I want to touch on is that the last time you were here, you told us that the problem of driving through the neighborhood had been resolved. Obviously, that's not the case. That's got to happen. And again, that's somebody's responsibility that's there every day. So take the initiative to deal with your employees. That's my suggestion.
And if I could just speak to that quickly, I'm not sure if I have the opportunity to do so or not, but I would say the reason that we called this here for, were, for a number of different reasons, clearly, the residents are bringing up issues that have not been escalated to be prior, which I want to make sure that the board understands. This is the first time that I'm hearing that the test drive route has not been adjusted. This is the first time that I'm hearing about potential, you know, doors being open longer than they should be outside of what I can see and what you've reported to me. Up until this point, there was one formal complaint, if you would call it that, made to the city. And I know, I believe, a member of the board said, hey, maybe they're just exhausted, maybe they just don't want to complain, but I would suggest, and it was actually due to the recommendation of this board, that I file this, you know, this amendment to remove this condition. So to your point, sir, all of these issues will be addressed. They will be addressed very firmly, they'll be addressed very honestly, and they'll be addressed immediately to make sure that these residents behind me feel safe where they live and are comfortable where they live, and we will respect them, for sure.
Mr. Robides, and Mr. Horton, then I'll weigh in here and vote for a motion.
Well, I guess that's sort of what I was going to do, is I think the area manager gets it. It's not our job to tell him what he should do or shouldn't do. Allah for one thing, I go to Portsmouth Ford, you pull up to the door, the door opens, it's on a census, there's the trucks, and the door shuts. I'm not going to tell you whether you should do what you should or should not do. Just for the sake of discussion, I'm going to make a motion to request that their request to alter the condition of approval on keeping doors shut be denied.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any discussion?
One point of discussion that I'll add on here. There's been some talk about Summersworth and the planning board being business-friendly, and I think our record supports that. I would amend that, that we should be friendly to businesses that are friendly to the city and the city's residents. Over the course of the time since your organization, when I speak of you here, I'm speaking of Bridgestone Firestone, not you personally.
Of course, absolutely.
And I want to make that clear, because this could be taken poorly if so. There were conditions placed on the original approval to try to reduce the impact to the neighborhood. Those have not been followed. You've been up in front of us for two compliance hearings, you're here again. It's clear to me that your organization is not abiding by the conditions that have been placed on them, that there have been safety concerns called in, and as one member of the board, as well as a resident of this city, I would like to request that the city begin gathering the legal paperwork required to revoke this. It's clear that the business has not been friendly to the city, to the city's residents, and I would say that with that request, if it's followed, the onus is on Firestone, that there's nothing found to revoke it. I hope that's clear in my position, and I hope that the board would agree with me if you ever come up in front of us again. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion to deny the request to alter the conditions of approval? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Mayor, is any new business coming before the board?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item of business number five, workshop business. Excuse me. Folks, could we continue the discussion outside so we can close up?
May I ask?
I suppose, yes.
So only a small portion of the neighborhood first got noticed when they were intending to build and bought these. If the entire, because it's a small neighborhood, it's a dead end. If we could somehow make sure that the whole neighborhood gets, because word of mouth is what got us together tonight, like, only like five people got letters.
Yeah, so I'm not sure of how the direct abutter rules work precisely, but I know that only, that only a certain radius is certified.
We'll take it under consideration. Yeah, we'll take it under consideration.
Mr. Rollin, or do we take it under consideration?
Right, thanks.
Thanks, all. And if we could continue the discussion outside, please?
Well, folks, can we please clear the chambers?
Our meeting is still going on.
Thanks, all.
I'd make a motion that we defer the workshop business to the next meeting.
Motion by Mr. Bellmore, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Horton, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, motion carries.
Motion to adjourn, an order?
Any communications miscellaneous first?
I'm just hoping you can review the subdivision updates.
For January?
For January. Bring comments.
Just, Mr. Weddeman?
Yeah, under communications, I know that I've been following the construction of the new car wash on High Street. I did flag the trench that was dug into High Street for either water, sewer, or both with public works. It was not done particularly well. Since then, the developer has repaved the
Since then, the developer has repaved the trench. It is as bad, if not worse, now. So we're not moving in the right direction. And I would hope that city staff somehow gets that corrected before issuance of a CO. The difficulty is, I don't know how you pave adequately this time of year, and I don't know when they're going to seek their CO. So it's a bit of a compromise. The other thing with that project, I, I think it changed hands after we approved it. And I would just encourage city staff to look very closely at the plan set that we approved and the conditions of approval, because somehow what's there is not what I envisioned, quite frankly. So I think it just needs a very close, watchful eye on it. So, thank you.
Yeah, I have one more thing, and then I'll, then I'll make a motion to adjourn. Same thing on the project that's happening on 108 behind the ambulance operation. Part of that stipulation was they've got to widen the end of that road. They've just did that today. There's no way they're going to pave that. So there's probably a five or a six-foot wide swale on each end of that road that's going to be mud. Again, I don't know how they paved that, but before a condition of approval gets granted, that's got to be completed.
They have a couple of items that need to be addressed over there.
Okay. Thank you. Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Robitis, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bellmore. Alls in favor? All right. Meeting is adjourned at 8:43.